At this time, I would like to invite all of you to please stand and join me in reciting the Fledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the minutes of the regular city council meeting, which was held on October 12th, 2021, and a special city council meeting held October 20th, 2021. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any corrections, changes, or additions to the minutes of those two meetings? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for approval of the two sets of minutes.
So move.
Seconded. Motion made seconded to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting, held October 12th, and a special council meeting held October 20th. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The consent agenda is referred to the council. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any members of the council that wishes to make any additions or remove any items from the consent agenda?
Mayor, item 7F.
Any other items? Not with item 7F removed from the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion for its approval.
So move.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the consent agenda as printed with removal of item 7F. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. This evening, Pam and Tom Mortensen would like to appear before the council and present a 150th anniversary flag, so I'll turn it over to Tom and Pam.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. It's an honor to be here tonight. What we have is the flag that flew over the state capitol on the day of our anniversary of the city becoming a city. So it's kind of unique in that sense, but we thought it was kind of appropriate to present it in person. I'm wearing the Grand Army of the Republic uniform. As you know, we have one of three parks in the nation, and the Grand Army of the Republic was the Union Veterans Organization following the Civil War, and Detroit Lakes has strong roots to this organization as it was, became a city. So Pam and I have got this from the governor's office. The unique thing about it was, they shipped it to MacDill, where I work, and it took almost two months to get it, because this flag was flown in July 29th in honor of the city. So Mayor and members of the city council, we'd like to present you with this proclamation, or you already have a proclamation from the mayor, from the governor, but this is the certificate that verifies that this flag has been flown over the city, for the city, over the state capitol. And there you go. It's all the city. And I'm presenting that not only to the city, but to the citizens of Detroit Lakes, because that's who makes our city. So thank you very much. We hope to do more. You'll see us flying on Veterans Day, the 37-star flag. If you recall, we passed that out a little while back, but we have a big one, we're gonna fly it, and that will eventually end up at the historical museum in honor of the 150th anniversary. We thank you for the courtesy of seeing us tonight and look forward to having you celebrate Veterans Day this Thursday.
We appreciate all your efforts, Tom and Pam. Thank you.
Well, you know, we're behind the shadows, people. Have a great one. Thank you, Mayor and city council and city administration and all the people that are here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
One last commercial. Rees-Across America Project, you also have a pamphlet on that. We'll be doing that again this December, and of course, I'll be back for Fuller Plunge in February.
All right. Thanks, Tom. That's it. Without objection, well, let's move to item B on the public hearings. So at this time, I'll adjourn the regular meeting and call to order a public hearing to consider the proposed assessments for the abatement of trees in 2020 and 2021. And so Sean or Kelsey, will you give us a preface of the proposed assessments on the tree abatements?
I'll start. Mayor and council, so earlier this summer, we had basically the improvement hearing on the abatement of diseased trees in town, and then basically those trees that weren't removed by the property owner, the city removed those trees and then notified the owners again of the proposed assessment. So the public hearing tonight is to take comments on those proposed assessments and adoption of the assessment roll. The proposed assessments are in your packet. The total assessment roll is $22,773.25. That's kind of it for me, but we did hand out one letter, too, that we should make council aware of. We did have one objection to the assessment for at 913 Rossman Avenue from Deborah Stewart as the owner. In the handout, I'm not gonna read the whole letter, but the letter is basically the objection to the assessment, basically objecting to just the notification. Also along with that should be a copy of the letter that I provided in response to Deborah's letter, kind of explaining what process the city took to notify the homeowner of the assessment. So that should be acknowledged by the council.
Okay, I know we have one citizen that's here this evening, and she had a question about the length of the, if it goes on her taxes, how long will that term be?
Mayor and council, so in the packet, if the assessment is less than $250, it's payable in one year. If it's more than $250, it's spread out over five years at 5% interest rate.
Does that answer all your questions?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to ask a question or has a comment regarding the proposed assessments for abatement of trees in 2021, or 2020 and 2021? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the proposed assessments with the notation with the item that Kelsey pointed out.
So move.
From Ms. Stewart.
Sorry. Matt has raised the question.
Okay, Matt?
Looking at Exhibit 4C, that breaks down the physical address and the cost system share, this Deborah Stewart isn't on the list.
That's a different assessment roll.
4B.
4B.
I was gonna say. I was sure.
Please strike that from the record and proceed.
I was sure. I took that yesterday. We were talking about this.
That's the next hearing.
Public Works reviewed the assessment roll yesterday and moves to adopt that assessment roll for the tree abatement for the year 2020, 2021.
Seconded. Motion's been made seconded to adopt the assessment roll for the abatement of trees in the year 2020, 2021. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Without objection by the council, I'd like to move to items 5D and 5G on the Community Development Committee. Dan?
Item 5D is consideration to a second reading and adoption of ordinance 483 zoning property at 735 Shorewood Drive from R8 Agricultural Residential to R2 1 &amp; 2 Family Residential. This is David Pratt's proposal. CDC reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance 483 rezoning property at 735 Shorewood Drive from R8 to R2. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item G is consideration to a resolution approving the final plat of Shorewood Oaks at 735 Shorewood Drive against this David Pratt's project, and CDC reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to adopting a resolution approving the final plat of Shorewood Oaks at 735 Shorewood Drive. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, David. Sir, did you have an item on the agenda that I could move up so you don't have to sit here all night?
Long Lake Avenue.
Pardon?
The annexation for Long Lake.
Okay. Without objection, I'm gonna move to item 4D, and I'll adjourn the regular meeting and call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the matter of annexation of a 4.5-acre tract of land in Lakeview Township and zoning the tract R2 at 15937 and 15985 along Lake Road. Kelsey, you want, or Larry or?
This is an annexation of a 4.5-acre tract that is 100% surrounded by the city, so we can annex it by ordinance.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the matter of this annexation? Good evening, sir. If you would give us your name and address for a minute, please.
Okay. I'm Doug Branstad. I'm the one at 15937 Long Lake Road. I addressed some of the concerns last night, so that will be the same tonight, is how soon it happens, what for me to be able to, how long I have for hooking up and stuff like that, I guess, and plus, you know, I've lived there for 36 years, so I have a lot of stuff, and that stuff is different from being there in the city versus the county, township, you know, what I can have, what I can't have, and that was my concern. So, I mean, I don't wanna get in any trouble, but yet I wanna have enough time and everything to find a place for some of my stuff.
Sure.
Or buy property outside of the city limits now, because I drive truck, my trucks are parked there, and they've been parked there for many, many years, you know, because that's where home is. And I remember when I lived on Finney Avenue, you couldn't have the semi, that was, well, that's 30-some years ago, you couldn't have the semi sitting down there all the time. I mean, I had good neighbors down there, but, you know, you just couldn't have it. So now that I'm way out there, still, I consider myself still kind of like in the county, but now we're gonna be city, so I just wanna make sure that I have enough time, and winter is hitting us in the tail, well, tomorrow, so we're not gonna be doing nothing, we're not gonna be moving nothing until at least spring, early summer, and then I'll be glad to cooperate. I just don't wanna get in any trouble or so on and so forth, and block horns and...
Sure. So Dan, I'm assuming that he attended the meeting?
Yep.
Yesterday?
Yep.
Did you get most of your questions answered?
I think I did, but I was said just to come tonight and say the same thing in front of the committee, and so we can, on the same basis, I'll come and talk to Kelsey and ask him what I need to do out there. I'm sure he'll tell me. And I don't know anything else. I mean, as long as this year I'm okay as far as what I have there, and beginning the next year, you know, it's okay. If I park it out on a different piece of property, we've had a bunch of thieving going on, I've got two of them arrested, you know, so if I park it, it's pretty much, they're gonna be there and they're gonna be stealing out of it. And, well, that's gonna cost me money.
Okay. So Larry, did you have something you wanted to add?
The annexation process requires two readings of an ordinance, so we won't have second reading of the ordinance until next month, and we probably won't see final approval from the state until January sometime. And I think the city is pretty well-known for working with people as long as they're making progress to clean things up, so I think we can make that work.
Okay. Answer all your questions and concerns for now?
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue of the annexation of 15937 and 15985 Long Lake Road? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed, and I would entertain a motion for first reading.
All right, so consideration to first reading ordinance 485 for annexation of a 4.58-acre tract of land in Lakeview Township and zoning the tract R2 1 &amp; 2 Family Residential District at 15937 and 15985 Long Lake Road. CDC reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Motion has been made seconded to give first reading to an annexation at 15937 and 15985 Long Lake Road. Discussion by the council. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is carried. And this was first reading, wasn't it, Charlie?
That's correct.
At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to consider the proposed assessments for construction of curb, gutter, approaches, and sidewalk improvements for the year 2021. Sean, Kelsey, Larry, somebody?
Mayor and council, similar to the tree removal, we had a hearing earlier this year on basically concrete improvements. After that hearing, the contractor didn't get as much done as we had originally had hoped for, so this is kind of an abbreviated list, but the assessment roll's in your packet. So basically, we're looking at an assessment roll of $26,544.64.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that has a question or wishes to speak to the issue of the proposed assessments for curb, gutter, approaches, and sidewalk improvements for the year 2021? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed. What are your wishes?
Public Works Committee Review did the assessment roll yesterday, and we moved to adopt that assessment roll for the construction of curb, gutter, approaches, and sidewalk improvements for the year 2021.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to adopt the proposed assessments for curb, gutter, approaches, and sidewalk for the year 2021. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. This time, I'll call to order a public hearing to receive public comments on the matter for the proposed vacation of the utility easements in Block 2 of the Tower Road and Desgrill Park. Kelsey?
Well, Larry, take this one.
This is the vacation of the utility easements for the County Highway Shop project.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the issue of the proposed vacation of utility easements in Block 2 of the Tower Road and Desgrill Park?
Or, I kinda wanted to. Are you telling me that the county doesn't have to pay for that stuff with this vote, or they do have to still pay for this stuff?
Larry, do you wanna?
Typically, with the vacation of utility or road right-of-way, these have been dedicated to the city in a plat, the city hasn't paid for them, when they get vacated, they revert to the underlying owners. That's...
So there's really no expense involved?
No, and that's the way the state law works.
I don't understand any of this. So always keep listening.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, that public hearing is closed. What are your wishes?
CDC reviewed this last night and recommends approving the consideration to a resolution vacating the utility easements in Block 2 of the Tower Road Industrial Park, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to vacate the utility easements in Block 2 of the Tower Road Industrial Park. Discussion?
Just for point of clarification, we're vacating the easements there, but the county is still looking to purchase some of the land though, correct?
That's correct.
And that is going to be happening in upcoming steps?
Yeah, because, a little more background, so that whole thing was platted into smaller lots, but the city bought multiple lots, the county bought multiple lots, and there's all these easements that lie in between those lot lines, we need to vacate those. We vacated the city portion a while back, but we never vacated the county parcel, so that cleans itself.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. That brings us to the Community Development Committee agenda. Chairman Joseph.
Item A is consideration to the sale of CEO property at Country Inn Suites. This was discussed last night at the CDC meeting. We didn't really come to much consensus, other than it's really not in the city's interest to sell this, so we're not taking any action on this unless there's somebody here that has some objection or wants to look at selling that property to anybody.
Okay, without objection, we'll move forward.
All right. Item B is consideration to the acceptance of a deed for a home at 211 Union Street East to the city. On this one, I would like to either have Kelsey take a stab at this, or the city attorney take a stab at it, and we'll see what happens.
This one is my...
Charlie?
Sometime within the last month, we received a letter from the attorney for the landowner. There have been some issues related to this property, I think, in the way of potential nuisance abatement. The building is in pretty bad shape. Matter of fact, the attorney for the landowner essentially said that the building needs to be removed. Unfortunately, though, the landowner doesn't have the financial means to make the corrections to the property, and so the landowner has offered through his attorney to turn the property over to the city for no charge, in other words, a quick claim deed. But also mentioned that there were some title problems with the property. So I talked to that attorney today. We are addressing what would it take to resolve those title problems. That's an ongoing conversation. You know, in addition to whatever the title issues might be, the city then would incur the expense of resolving the problems with the property, which most likely would require removal of the structure. Kelsey can speak better than I can as to what that expense would be, just based upon some experience. I don't have experience in doing that. The title problems, you know, would potentially be expenses to the city in the $4,000 to $5,000 range. I think the goal of the policy question is just, is the removal of this problem in the neighborhood worth the potential risk to the city that we may not recover once the building is removed, all of the costs that we expend on doing the cleanup? My general recommendation is that the council approve the acceptance of that conveyance contingent upon my review of whatever those title issues are and determination that we can resolve them for a reasonable amount. If there's any questions about that, I don't have a great deal of detail regarding the title problems. That was the discussion that I was having with the landowner's attorney today, and it's ongoing.
So Kelsey, if we let this house just sit there and it eventually gets forfeited due to non-payment of taxes or condemned or whatever, what's our situation then compared to what we could do now?
You know, unfortunately, I think if we want to resolve the problem and, you know, raise the structure, we're probably gonna be stuck with the cost either way, because right now, if we go through an abatement process and we have a hearing, no one's claiming ownership of the property, so no one's gonna fix the problem. So we'll go in there, demo it, and then assess it back to the taxes. Taxes go in forfeiture, the assessments get canceled, we're back holding the cost for the assessment, and then if we wanted to buy the property, somehow try to reclaim our cost, we're gonna go to the sheriff's auction and forfeiture and acquire it from the county. So now we're gonna buy it from the county, plus try to recoup our cost. Long story short, I agree with Charlie, if we can resolve the title issues for a reasonable cost, I think it's in the best interest of the city. Accept the deed, get clear title, we'll have to remove the structure ourselves, and then hopefully, you know, for sale of the lot, we can recoup our cost.
What's the status of the real estate taxes?
Behind.
Okay. Question by the council or?
I've got a question. What's this, is that a full-size lot or just a partial?
It's a D lot, it's not super wide though.
Andrew, do you know how much the taxes are that are due for 20 years, approximately?
Well, I think the assessed value of the property is somewhere in the $20,000 to $30,000 range. I don't believe there's a lot of taxes, but they are delinquent for 20 years.
This year's taxes are $500 approximately.
All right, thank you.
So what do you want to do, guys?
CDC reviewed this last night and recommends approving the acceptance of a deed for a home at 211 Union Street East, based upon the ability for the attorney...
Contingent upon proof that that actually dissolved the title.
Yeah, contingent upon the city attorney being able to be successful on this job. I so move.
Seconded.
Hey, Larry, have fun with that one.
Motion's been made seconded to accept a deed for home at 211 Union Street East, contingent on the city attorney's approval of whatever legal...
Oh, shoot, my house is like, that's a block from my house, two blocks from my house. That's a really nice property, actually, if a person could put a roof on.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you're talking about tearing it down, I mean...
Want to buy it?
Sure, how much you want us to offer?
Okay, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item C is consideration to a resolution decertifying tax increment financing District 8-3. This is the Greystone property. CDC reviewed this last night, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to decertify the tax increment financing district number 8-3, which is a Greystone. Discussion?
Can I, someone, clarify what this means?
Yeah, Larry, will you clarify?
What this means is that the tax increment district 8-3 has completed, we have completed making all of the required payments that we are required to make under the TIP agreement, and so we are going to notify the county, they will decertify the district, and all of the taxes will then be distributed to the taxing entities, the city, the county, and the school district, and others.
Further discussion? We did have a motion to second, didn't we?
We did.
It was like a minute ago.
We did, yes. Joseph, seven votes.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item E is consideration to a second reading and adoption of ordinance 484 zoning property at 600 Homestead Street, R1 Single Family, R2 1 &amp; 2 Family District. CDC recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to give second reading and adopt ordinance 484 rezoning 600 Homestead Street to R2. Discussion?
This is a parcel that's very narrow, but very deep, so with kind of setbacks and everything, it just makes more sense to allow the zoning of R2 versus along for the setback reasons.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item F is consideration to a resolution approving the variance to allow construction of a 31-foot-high accessory building instead of the required 26-foot-high accessory building at 903 8th Street Southeast. This is the Oakshirts property. CDC reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to adopt a resolution approving a variance to allow a 31-foot-high accessory building instead of the required 26-foot-high building at 903 8th Street Southeast. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item H is consideration to a resolution approving the final plat of common interest community, number 94, Lake's Toy Storage at Little Detroit, first supplemental common interest community plat. CDC recommends approval, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made seconded to adopt a resolution approving the final plat of common interest community, number 94. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Further items, Dan?
I'm done for the night. I'm done for the night. And we'll be at the Public Works, Chairman Joseph.
Item A, discussion regarding signage on Shorewood Drive. Mr. Wenner referred to some comments that the planning commission received regarding, I believe it was regarding Mr. Pratt's project, upcoming project, from the neighbor, some of the neighbors wanting some signage regarding blind approaches and narrow shoulders. The Public Works Committee discussed this at length, determining that if we were to sign, put signage for that particular area, we'd have to sign for the entire stretch of Shorewood Road, because it's all the same sort of thing, lots of driveways, and... all the same sort of thing. Lots of driveways and lots of no shoulders. Item B, update on the Green Step Cities program. If you look in your packet, you will find the Green Step Cities program. There is a group of concerned citizens that are really working on this and trying to encourage the city to follow through with some Green Step Cities program. Right now, we're on Level 2, and we need to accomplish a few more things to get to Level 3. Kelsey, anything else to add to that? Bridget has been doing some of her work with that.
Yeah, that's the only thing I'd probably add. Mayor and council's credit Bridget Patton. There's these action report forms, and she filled out a bunch. So, things that we've already been doing, so we just get credit for it. So, she submitted those. We got a new summary report, which is in your packet, and continue to work on those best practices.
Okay.
Item C was a discussion on snow removal. As you know, we're getting into the season where we're going to have to be concerned about snow emergencies and snow removal. And the Public Works Committee had quite a discussion about snow removal and snow emergencies, where it's particularly difficult in some of our residential areas where there are also apartments that tenants end up parking on the streets, and our Public Works guys have trouble trying to plow around cars in an emergency situation. So, we're publicizing quite a bit about what is legal and what isn't. Cars cannot be on the road or parked on streets during snow emergencies, and we will be starting to tick it for that. So, we want to make sure everybody is aware of that, and that landlords are also aware that it's their responsibility to have parking areas for their tenants so that they don't incur this problem. So, just trying to call it to everybody's attention. It's been on Facebook, and I think it's been in the paper as well.
So, we have three representatives from the press here. Could Sean or Kelsey or somebody just review how this will all sort of take place? We have a snow event, and we're going to declare an emergency officially and put it out. How soon? And if you could just go through that quickly, Sean?
Mayor and council, yes, the snow emergency, we will try to put that out well in advance. We will put that out on Facebook. We'll send out a press release, so it hits all the news media and also our Facebook page, so people see that, so they can move the vehicles from the streets. We're going to try to do that as soon as we can off the forecast when we're forecasting a large amount of snow. And just so everyone's aware, they're supposed to have the vehicles off the street from 1:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. until we get the streets cleared.
Okay. Any questions by the council or members of the press? Any questions?
I, well, do we ever do any creative snow removal? I don't need to be on that cam or nothing, but, I mean, I was thinking about this, and a lot of people, a lot of these smaller towns, they don't even plow the side roads. Like, we're running snow plows on this much snow, and then all every time those snow plows hit a crack, it's just tearing up the roads every time. So, maybe we could wait until there's a considerable amount of snow and then come through, rather than, and maybe that's, we were talking about large snow, but I see the city, they're plowing nothing. It'll just turn into ice. And then, are we still putting, are we using salt still or are we just away from that?
Brine. Sean, do you want to talk about the brine situation?
Yes, we are moving towards liquid. As you can see, a little further down the agenda, we are purchasing a brine maker so we can make our own salt brine, so we can move towards the liquid and try to move away from granular and use that uptown, so we're not dragging granular salt into the businesses.
Well, I just, that's a huge point, too. But there's a lot of people on the north side of town, like, we can't afford new vehicles, and they're just getting so rusty, and then the taxes, everything, just, like, it seems like the north side's getting choked out out there.
Okay, Max, we'll take it under advisement. We appreciate your comments.
Hey, Sean, can you tell us what constitutes a snow emergency?
I will have to go back to the letter. The snow emergency can be declared when there is forecasted two inches of snow or more, or hazardous road conditions or likely to impede free movement of fire, health, police, emergency, and other vehicular vehicles.
Okay, that's what we needed to know.
All right. Is there any formal action we need to take?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Item D, consideration to a memo from the Public Works Director to purchase an SV600 brine maker. Sean just explained that we're going to start making our own brine, and hopefully that will assist in people not dragging salt in and all of that sort of thing. So, Public Works moves to purchase an SV600 brine maker. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded to move forward and purchase a SV600 brine maker from the Public Works Department.
Well, just, another thing is, are we so concerned about the ice in the driving that we just have to buy all this equipment and put all this salt in the brine? I mean, if we've got a couple of good guys and a couple of gravel trucks driving around, wouldn't that make things a lot easier on us?
Probably what you should do, Max, if you're concerned about some of these things, is to come to the next Public Works Committee meeting, where we have a lot more discussion, and it would be more appropriate, I think, for your questions to get answered in that setting, so.
Well, okay. I don't mean to overstep anyone's boundaries.
No, that's all right, man. Just I'd just like everybody to work together.
Okay, go ahead, Madam.
Item E, consideration to the approval and issuance of dock licenses for 2022. If you-
Did we not vote?
Oh, we did not.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Now you, sorry, that's my booboos.
Item E, consideration to the approval and issuance of dock licenses for 2022. These are the dock licenses that are issued for down on West Drive. Public Works reviewed it and approves the issuance of those dock licenses for 2022.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the issuance of dock licenses for 2022.
There are three of them at this point.
I think we were going to amend the one dock license, Chisholm, or just the Pontoon or the jet ski.
Yes, sorry about that. Public Works, one of the residential dock licenses indicates they would like two lifts, a Pontoon lift and a jet ski lift, and the ordinance only allows for one lift. So, we'll need to talk to Mr. Chisholm and have him decide which of the lifts he prefers to have. So, we're going to issue that license, but only with the one.
Right, okay, very good. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Thanks for calling that to our attention.
So, at this time, I think we should hear from City Engineer John Pratt with the monthly project status report, especially what's going on in Willow Street.
Right. All right, Mayor and Council, just running down projects. We are getting wrapped up with things for the year, obviously. Westlake Drive, Legion, 2 County Road 6. I guess what I can say on that is I think there's progress being made in the way of the negotiations on that. More to come. We're not there yet, but I would say that we're moving in the right direction at this point, at least, in terms of advancing that project next year. The second phase of that Westlake Drive project from County Road 6 to Plowton River, we are under design on that one. Again, we're getting construction next year sometime. The Urquess subdivision, Ridgeview, that project is well underway. Underground utilities to be completed. They got the curb in Gutterport yesterday. They're working on kind of cleaning things up for the year out there. They will not get the base course pavement down at this point, so they'll wrap up the paving and some extra frustration, things like that, next year, but it's probably 80% completed. The Brisbane subdivision, I did receive plans from the developers engineer on that. We've reviewed them and sent those back with some comments for them to consider and address. Presumably, that project would go or start next summer sometime. One of what everybody's wondering about is the Willow Homes at Frey's East Street project. They are getting that paved, obviously, just in a good time, but things were going well today. If all things go well, they should actually wrap up tonight. They brought out some light plants and plan on continuing. If there's a little bit of work, I think we've got some time in the morning to finish up a few things, but then that will be getting cleaned up and reopened to traffic here probably later this week. So, we're going to make it. Lake Forest Seventh Edition, that project substantially complete. Just the wear course paving and the overlay on 270th complete next spring, otherwise that one is done. Highland Drive, street reconstruction. I think Kelsey had sent out an update on all that to the council, but the county and township have reached an agreement on road swap, so the township will be taking over 241, I believe it is, in exchange for rent for Highland Drive. So, this effectively becomes a, will be a county road. Moving forward, the city will still contribute its share towards this, but this and this time only. After that, it becomes a county road. So, I guess in my mind, this is a win for everybody, and the project should advance to construction next year. So, nothing to report on until the springs at this point.
Any questions for John? Thank you. Anything else, Madam?
Nope, forgot.
Okay, we'll move to the Finance Committee. Chairman Zeeman?
Okay, the first item was-
Can we get a motion in a second on that?
On which one?
Oh, do you want to adopt the report?
Yeah, maybe we don't have it on consent.
So, make a motion to adopt the City Engineers' monthly project report.
Public Works so moves.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, item 7A, this afternoon, the tourism, some of the members of the committee met with us today, and as you know, we have a lodging tax in the Tret Lakes, where we charge a 3% lodging tax, and people stay in a hotel motel. And that money is used to promote tourism in the Tret Lakes area. And I've got good news, because after having a very poor year last year because of the COVID, they're on their way to setting an all-time record for stays here in the Tret Lakes at our motel lodging. The previous record was in 2018 when it was over $270,731, and they're going to, looks to, under, they're on light now, that they're going to exceed that record. So, they needed a good year to come back on after COVID, and they've got it, and they're doing a great job, and people have really been coming back to the Tret Lakes for tourism, and I'm glad they did that. Going on to item B, in your packet, we have a review of the fee schedule for 2022, and I want you to take a look at that. We looked over everything on that. It looks good. We want all the council members to take a look at that, and if there's anything that you think needs to be changed or adjusted, please let staff or members of that committee to know, because we're going to be approving that probably at our December meeting. So, take a look at that, and if anything comes up, just let us know. Also, on item C, we had discussion in regards to our ARPA funds, and as you know, the city did receive $982,828.50. We get seen the first half on July 28th of 2021 this summer, and the second half will come next July of 2022. But you've got in your packet, there are some ideas that we have, where if we could use that money, these are all eligible areas that we can use this money, but take a look at that, and if you have any other ideas, that's where you think something could be used with these funds. We don't have, it's not a whole lot of money, so it doesn't take long to spend $982,000 these days, but take a look at that. If you have any discussion, see Kelsey or Heidi and Kelsey, have anything else you'd like to report on that or anything else? So, but if you have ideas, we want to hear what your ideas are. And other than that, we've got the monthly financial report, and I'm going to have Heidi go over that with us, because our numbers are looking good, because as the lodging had a good year, we also had a good year in food and beverage and so forth. So, Heidi, if you can give us those reports.
Sure thing. So, in the packet this evening, under the finance reports, you will see some, the same reports that you're used to seeing, however, there'll be, a couple of them may be in a different format. As you're aware, we've upgraded our financial systems a bit from InCode version 9 to version 10. So, the pooled cash report looks a little different, and then also our general fund revenue and expense report looks a little different. So, those two are just going to be a little bit of a variance from what you're used to seeing, but hopefully, it's an improvement. So, you'll see the first page, or the first two pages are the cash report, cash balance report, and then there's the general fund revenue expenditure report. Everything there looks like it's on track with where you would expect it to be at this time of year, so nothing really earth-shattering there. Everything's kind of on par. As far as food and beverage tax, that is actually bouncing back quite well after COVID. So, this year, you know, I'm not seeing final figures yet for August or September, but I do have preliminary figures, and those are coming in quite strong. In fact, the September figures for 2021 are, the estimate is even higher than the 2019 actual ending amounts. So, very strong and looking quite good. So, I anticipate tomorrow, it's right around the 10th of the month when the state sends out those final figures. So, I'm guessing tomorrow I'll get those final August figures. I'll email those all out to you tomorrow, those updated reports, when those are available. Moving on, the general local option sales tax, again, which goes to pay back the police department bonds, which were issued for the new police department. That is, again, going very well. I do not have final August or September figures for this tax as well, but those figures are still very, very strong. Well, well over what we had anticipated we would receive. So, year-to-date in 2021, we've received over 1.4 million. We'd anticipated about a million a year. So, very strong, and still looking at paying off those bonds probably somewhere around May of 2023 rather than February of 2028 as originally planned. The last report in your packet, under Finance Reports, is the liquor store sales report. You'll see October sales in 2021 were at just over $611,600, so very strong. You know, obviously not as strong as last year with COVID and all of that, but well outpacing the 2019 figure of $518,000. So, again, very, very strong sales over at the liquor store. And I would be happy to answer any questions, otherwise that's all I have for you this evening.
Thanks, Heidi. That's a good report. I like the way you do the reports. Looking good, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would make a motion, go ahead and approve that report as presented by Heidi.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the monthly financial reports. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Anything else?
No, nothing else, Your Honor.
Okay, go to the Public Safety Committee. Anything, Dan?
Well, Your Honor, I was unable to attend the meeting last night.
Okay.
And so, I asked the city staff or any of the other committee members if anything came up that requires the attention of the council.
Eric ran the meeting, so.
Yeah, I was pretty used to it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything to bring forward?
We just had updates from Chief Swanson and Chief Todd. Would you guys want to update what's going on, or?
[laughing]
We're all good, so. Everything's good.
Sounds very efficient, Eric.
Thank you.
Well, then, we'll move forward with the Liquor Gambling Control Committee. Chairman Boebel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 9A, Peter Jacobson from the Home Center was here tonight to present this kind of a different option for the liquor at the Home Center. Kelsey, if you could fill us in, please?
Yeah, real quick. So, Mayor and Council, when we do liquor licenses at the theater, they're individual liquor licenses. They're called a special liquor license, and there is a $150 per event fee, and that's why you always see a whole list of special licenses under Liquor and Gambling Committee. The discussion we had a little bit is doing some sort of annual license to- The discussion we had a little bit is doing some sort of annual license to vendors where they would just pay one fee and then they'd be covered for the year, so probably more discussion on that next month when we approve the fee schedule.
So no actions taken on nine A. Item nine B, consideration to the request from Propel DL to sponsor the Polar Fest fireworks. They're asking for a $2,000 donation for the fireworks during Polar Fest. It will be two different evenings, $1,000 per show. We did have this budgeted in our 150th celebration, so this is a budget item. We thought this was acceptable and we made a motion to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a request from Propel DL to sponsor the two fireworks shows during the Polar Fest. Discussion on the item? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The last topic I have is Randy would mention this if he was here tonight, but he will join us. The liquor store has new automatic beer cave doors, so please, everybody go test them out, walk through them, I hear they're splendid.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Madeline tells me there's nothing to bring forward from the public utilities. We've got some city administration items. First of all, we've got consideration to a resolution authorizing the execution of a grant agreement with MinDOT for maintenance and operation expenses at the Detroit Lakes Airport. I'll have Kelsey practice this.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, the first one is just a routine grant that we get for maintenance and operations at the airport, so basically they help fund our general operating expenses we submit as a reimbursable expense, so that's something we do every two years, so we have a new contract with a resolution to approve.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for its approval.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve, adopt a resolution authorizing, executing a grant agreement with MinDOT for the maintenance and operation expenses at the airport. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 11B is consideration to a resolution authorizing the execution of a grant agreement with MinDOT for hangar site prep construction at the airport. Kelsey?
Mayor and Council, this is, we talked about this a little bit at the special meeting about the new hangar that's being constructed out the airport. We were successful getting a grant from MinDOT to help fund basically the site improvements to the tune of $193,232.20, so again, need a resolution to approve that.
And this is for the new hangar that will house the air
Ambulance.
ambulance system, okay.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a grant agreement with MinDOT for hangar site prep construction at the airport. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item 11C is consideration to a resolution adopting the updated general records retention schedule for Minnesota cities for the city of Detroit Lakes, and I would call on city staff.
Mayor and Council, Gloria could kick me here if I get this wrong, but we adopt the state's record retention schedule, basically that's all of our files that we amassed. There's a retention schedule the state has, for how long we had to keep those files and they periodically update that schedule, so we have a new update schedule to adopt.
So there's different timelines for different types of records, I assume?
Correct.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for approval of that resolution.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a, or approve a resolution adopting the updated general records retention schedule for Minnesota cities for the city of Detroit Lakes. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item 11D is consideration to a resolution designating the polling locations for 2022. And those locations are the same as we've had in the past? You want to stay where they are?
Mayor and Council, they're actually the Lutheran churches, so first ward is Grace Lutheran, second ward is Trinity Lutheran, and third ward is First Lutheran.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to approve a resolution designating the polling locations for 2022. Discussion?
I've got a question, whether we find out when the ward boundaries are going to change and what those new changes will be for wards, do we, will we know that?
Mayor and Council, it's a great question. We've talked a little bit about it at CDC, it's a work in progress. We have a webinar coming up this week. Going down the weeds a little bit here, really what we're trying to get is we're trying to adjust the ward boundaries a little bit, but we're trying to get census data down to the actual blocks and neighborhoods so we can figure out what the options are, so stay tuned.
So is the north side growing again?
The north side grew, yes, yes.
You might have some new constituents. So, do we need, we didn't vote yet, did we?
No, we don't.
Okay, we've got a motion and second, adopting the polling, a resolution designated the polling locations. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. I've got a few appointments I'd like to recommend to the council. First of all, I'd like to recommend the name of Tom Cleavy to serve on the Police Civil Service Commission, fulfilling the, resigned Commissioner Jeff Swanson's seat on the Police Civil Service Commission.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Tom Cleavy to the Police Civil Service Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. I do not have a recommendation at this time for the park board. If anyone in the, if anyone in the council has a name for me or a recommendation, I would be certainly open to that for next month. I would like to recommend the name of Amy Wolf to serve in the Tourism Bureau to fulfill the term of resigned member Melissa Heemans, and I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Amy Wolf to the Tourism Bureau. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. I'd like to recommend a reappointment of Chris Nord with Planning Commission, and I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Chris Nord with Planning Commission to another term. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And I would like to recommend the reappointment of Madeline Sukie to the Public Utilities Commission.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Madeline Sukie to the PNC. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And I'd like to recommend the names of Shaila Wall and Sean Eckert to both be reappointed to the Sports Arena Commission for another term.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to reappoint Shaila Wall and Sean Eckert to the Sports Arena Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. A few announcements, there'll be a public discussion on the 2021 budget and tax funding pursuant to the truth in taxation requirements, and that will take place at our next city council meeting at 6:01 p.m. The Canadian Pacific Holiday Treaty will be virtual again this year due to COVID-19 concerns, and also in the packet, we've got the remaining December meeting for 2021, the regular council meeting, and then the council meeting dates for 2022, including our annual meeting on January 4th. Is there any other items that the city staff has at this time for the council? Aaron, anything you've got to bring forward?
All good.
Okay, Wendy? Dan?
I just had a question on, so this, the strobe at the end of the airport that kind of overlooks Highway 59, when you've got an airplane coming in, I'm guessing that's when the strobe goes, but it's also kind of distracting to drivers on Highway 59, just had a question on how that relates to nuisances to drivers when you've got so many things going on there? If there, maybe there isn't been any thought or just complaint?
Alderman, Justin, I think you're right, they're keyed up upon approach. The pilot can key those approach lights up. I guess I haven't had any complaints about, from drivers or anything. As far as the height of those light stanchions, the direction of them, even the light strength is all required basically through FAA, so there's, I can't even say that we can go and change anything, you know, the direction of it, so I'm not sure how else to answer that one.
I was just driving by last night and it flashed in my eyes several times, so I was wondering.
Max, do you have something that I would comment?
Boy, did you plant some trees or slow the people down.
Rod?
Well, I just wanted to say that you just heard the mayor looking for volunteers and the city has lots of these volunteers, you're thinking about maybe you'd like to be in the planning commission, the parks board, about the library, about the food pantry, and maybe even want to be a volunteer fireman. We've got lots of things that can help you out if you want to be a city volunteer. We meet people, men or women, it doesn't matter, they're all important. If you're physically able to do these things, please come to the city office and throw your hat in the ring, we're always deep volunteers and that's one of the biggest jobs mayor has, is trying to find good people to be on these volunteer committees, so.
I gotta write the three.
And write the three to the best.
So, we also could use some part-time employees in the city as well, right, Kelsey?
Yep.
Sports arena, our liquor store?
Liquor store is always hiring. Of course, this time of year, our concern is with the arena and also our warming houses. Can't emphasize that enough, we've got to have some part-time help to have those warming houses open, so.
I get that, or do I got to? Come into City Hall, we'll put you to work, Max.
I want to, I want to work at the hockey rink.
Come on in, we'd love to have you. Hey, you're all right.
Oh, absolutely.
Madeline?
Nothing.
Max?
Oh, sir. It's pretty good.
I would like to applaud the staff at the Holmes Theater and the DLCC far and far exceeding their fundraising goals for the ballroom renovation and receiving donor support to transfer funds to other capital improvements in the city home building, so way to go.
That's great, that's, yeah. Jamie? Anything else? Dan?
Nothing, Your Honor.
The business of this council is come to the conclusion and the meeting is adjourned.